Probably should've taken a note from you and done it somewhere else, you know, to prep everything. But I have family coming to stay and so.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Hmm.
They get there Friday.
(laughing).
They're not maybe. But going down this party, these ideas are what I could do.
I know, that's why we did it early. Because I would've been like, oh, maybe we should.
I looked up about finding all the photographs and like. I don't know if you're in the conversation. My first two had. They were old enough that we took pictures, pictures, right? But Lily was on digital. And, you know, whatever, so I don't have any hard copies of her pictures. And I'm like, should I find these now?
Are they on my phone?
Are they on my phone or my old digital camera? Little disc.
Yeah, I know.
Probably should make these. Figure out where to do that. Go figure it out, get them off.
Yeah.
Get speed, if you're not careful.
Oh, I could've done it remotely. What'd you think of that?
I mean, we got the money.
Yeah, one hour jump, I know where we lost.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, great.
It was here three minutes regardless, now it's far three minutes.
Are you staying on this side of the podium this time? Mr. Mayor? What? Are you gonna stay on this side of the podium or are you gonna go out there?
I was actually gonna say, all the, all the impactful words you offered on Friday didn't make it in there. Did you see that?
Uh.
He takes away your interview.
Right.
He did an interview. First question's like, ah, Mickey?
Do what you can. Do you know how late from the hours are for the light show on the bridge?
Pretty sure she put that up on the spot.
It's, it's an intermittent schedule.
Well, that would've been a good answer.
That's still done. Do you know the color schemes that we have offered? Um, here. Rainbow?
Just start with a polarizing.
And then we had tweeting.
And we had closing documents called Millsay.
I noticed in the parade and the flags at the beginning, they said, add our old flag.
Did they?
Mm-hmm.
All I heard was.
As I looked it up to make sure, no, it's not.
Alright, it is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, June twelfth to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance issued by the United States of America. And to the Republic for which stands, one nation, honor to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, next item on our agenda is the agenda review and adoption. We'll look for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and Tim gets a second.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Open forum, public comment. We do have three signed up tonight. First one is John Ellis. Joel Persky. If you can state your name and address.
Sure.
And you have three minutes to speak to the council.
Yeah, Joel Persky, five oh nine North Tenth Street. This council has brought shame and disgust to this community. The action of selling the golf course to a private individual is unforgivable and unforgettable. The action is wrong in so many ways. And I could spend quite some time in talking about that. At the last two council meetings, I sat here with past mayors and council, council members to see if we could clarify why it was being sold and how it was being sold, but we refused to be heard to let us speak. There was no need to move forward with a vote, but you chose not to listen to your elected predecessors and the general public. It was painful. We sat here for four hours. You refused to respond to some of the phone calls, text messages, to have dialogue on the issue. You hid behind a page of questions and answers on the city website. That's not transparency, that's not honest government. The whole process reeked. First, it was very clear in two thousand eight when we purchased the property that we bought it with the intent for future generations. It was for parkland and green space. That's how the question was intended and that's how it was understood on the ballot. Having the golf course there was just to continue as a holding place while we had plans for future development and we would lease the property as an income source for parks and other needs. But you basically gave the property away. The process was sculpted to meet the needs of one of your business buddies. You put the financial benefits of one individual ahead of the visions and the wants and the needs of this community. The existing operators had no problems with continuing the lease. You created a fictitious problem of irrigation and the parking lot. And I can say the parking lot is actually better than some of the roads in this community. Hearing from many individuals, they were appalled at the price the city received for the eighty-one acres, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Now, if you remember when we built the arena, we also took the money from the golf course lease and put that into the arena. And that'll be in there for the next ten years. With that amount of money coming off, the sale of the property then nets about a thousand, one hundred thousand dollars for the eighty-one acres. That's crazy. Where aware is the financial responsibility? You did have to close it, you didn't have to close the deal three weeks ago. You could've taken a pause, you could've reevaluated the process, and you could've reevaluated the price. But you chose not and you closed the deal. There seems to be a great disconnect here between the residents of Sartell and the leadership here at City Hall. I urge you, I urge you now to do whatever possible to fix that. See that, see if we can correct that mistake. And I ask Mr. Testa to do the right thing and give us back that parkland. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dalton and Angelo Linder. You can state your name and address for the record.
Dalton, Dalton Angelo Linder, two oh five First Street Northeast, Sartell.
Okay, we're here to address a light that our neighbors have that we feel is against city ordinance ten dash seven dash four. Honestly, we would've preferred to handle it with them, but when we tried, they were unreasonable. We also tried the police department and the zoning department and we're just shuffled back and forth with them. Um, we do not really feel that either the zoning department nor the police department fully understand the situation. Um, we were told by the zoning departments that the light, which is well above our six-foot privacy fence, is deflecting off of our fence onto our property, which is not even possible. Um, and it's also behind our fence. Uh, the points in which we feel they're, um, in violation of are it is not directed away from our property. Also, we were told by the zoning department that if it's more than point five foot candles, um, that it would have to, we would have to get somebody to measure that for us. So we bought the device to do it. Um. And it read at what, one point?
Nine sev.
One point nine seven foot candles. Um, and that was three feet on our side of the property. We did not go exactly to the property line. We've already spent a considerable amount trying to make peace with these guys and just putting the privacy fence up. It's affecting both of us, it's affecting other neighbors, it's affecting our children greatly, um, in other situations. Um, another thing is that we were told that the city couldn't do anything about it by the zoning department because it's a security light, which, um, we understand securing one's property, especially given things that happen. Um, they have two small children and we get that. But, um, it shouldn't go against city ordinance just because it's a security light. Um.
And flood our back, floods our backyard. I got pictures of you.
We have pictures. I don't know, are we allowed to give those to you?
Uh, you can drop off off here.
Okay. Um, in saying that, uh, our neighbor said it was a security light. Um, I was out on June first to water some hanging baskets that are on our fence and I saw him in the window. It wasn't even nine o'clock, it wasn't dark. He turned the light on me and turned, I watered my plants, I turned to walk away. He turned it off and it's just a game. It's not a security light. They only have, they have a very small property, a very, I think it's ten, fifteen feet on that side, so. Um, and again, we understand security lighting, you know, I, I get that. But, um, this goes beyond that and is clearly against city ordinance, so. Um, and that is it. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, these, uh, key per.
If you wanna have everybody see you.
Yeah, we'll pass them on to staff if you don't mind, or do you need them back?
No, we don't need them back.
Okay.
I got cottons.
Thank you very much. Council, next ad, uh, next item on our agenda is the approval of city council minutes from May twenty-second regular council meeting. Take a motion.
I'll move that.
This is motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. We have consent agenda with a large consent agenda this night, which is items A through P. I'll take a motion on those, or if there's any to pull. On the motion? A motion to, to through A through P?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. On to public hearings, we have two public hearings tonight. First one is a conditional use permit, Enterprise Energy.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The first, uh, public hearing I will take, um, and it is the conditional use permit submitted by Enterprise Energy. This conditional use permit would allow, um, to construct and operate a, up to two megawatt solar garden in a R one single-family residential district. As stated within our zoning ordinance, solar gardens wanted to megawatts in residentially zoned properties are permitted by a conditional use permit, which is granted, um, by the city council. Um, with additional screening requirements. This property was in Leesock Township and was annexed into the city of Sartell, which was approved by council on April, April twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-three. Um, also with that annexation petition, um, a conditional use permit application was submitted on April twelfth of two thousand twenty-three. However, the conditional use permit application was not able to be reviewed until the property was, um, legally into jurisdiction of the city of Sartell, which was granted by the state of Minnesota on May second. Now, if we go back, um, into the month of May, on May first, the planning commission, um, reviewed and recommended approval of a three, of, at that time, a six-month solar garden moratorium. This was then brought to city council on May eighth, um, with the modification to do a three-month solar garden moratorium. This will expire on August eighth of this year, two thousand twenty-three. So, in light of adopting the interim ordinance, um, and this application, this does not automatically stay the pending application. And we still have to abide by the time constraints and requirements per Minnesota statutes. So initially, we have sixty days to review and recommend or take action on the conditional use permit application. So upon direction from legal, there was two options. I was presented and given two options to then present to the applicant and landowner. One of the options is, was to withdraw the application, refund the fee, and then upon expiration of the moratorium, which is in August, the applicant could reapply under the standards in place at that time. Now, part of that is if the new solar garden ordinance would not even allow the submittal of a conditional use permit or an interim use permit, then they wouldn't be able to pursue that avenue at all. So that was the first option. The second option was choose to proceed with the request and follow the conditional use permit process as defined within our, um, ordinance. So after the May eighth meeting where council approved the three-month moratorium, I spoke with the applicant, um, and explained the options that were presented from legal on the avenues that we could go down for this application. I also spoke to the landowner as well in upon some discussions, um, that we would pursue the application process and review period. Um, I will go back just and give some brief background on this property and project. Um, discussions go back to October of two thousand twenty-two. That started with Leesock Township in discussions with Scottsayer, with the city of Sartell outlining, um, avenues for this proposed project. The applicant, um, and landowner did go to a joint planning board meeting and discuss the proposed project. Um, and Leesock Township clarified that with their current ordinance, they do not allow solar garden developments of any kind. They only allow residential solar usage for the specific permitted use of the property, and they did not entertain modifying their ordinance at that time. Hence, directed to annex into the city and pursue this path for this project. So, um, that's where that stated, um, and then fast forward a few months to April when the application was actually submitted for the annexation and the conditional use permit. Um, upon some further discussions specifically with the landowner, another option would be to extend the sixty-day statute requirement, an additional sixty days, so a total of a hundred and twenty days. If this option would be approved by council tonight, um, I would propose that this conditional use permit be considered and acted upon at the August fourteenth meeting. Um, at this time, or at that time, we would be able to align the conditional use permit conditions and requirements and findings of fact with the new solar garden ordinance. And we did conduct a workshop at the June fifth planning commission meeting where I believe that the conditions of this permit could be modified to align with the new ordinance for solar gardens. Um, and right now, just as a update, the solar garden ordinance is with our legal staff for final touches and review. So that will come back, um, in July. So, to summarize that, this, the staff recommendation would be to extend the sixty-day review period, an additional sixty days. This would give us time to ensure that all the conditions would align with, um, our solar garden ordinance. Um, so this would be brought to planning commission for actual review of the findings of fact and conditions on August seventh and then August fourteenth for final review and consideration at a city council level. And tonight, I would also ask to have the public hearing held for this to satisfy, um, our requirement per state statute for a timing purpose, um, as well as in your packets, you did see there was a resolution that if that would be the avenue that council would want to, um, act upon, you could approve it. However, the staff recommendation would be to extend that time period, um, so we would need to conduct a public hearing if that was approved, um, before that. Um, I will take any questions that you may have. But just to summarize, this is the ask from staff is to recommend the sixty-day, um, time period so we could review and make sure it aligns with our new ordinance.
Council, any questions before we open the public hearing?
I have just one quick clarification. So the public hearing, open forum portion, you want when? Or I wasn't sure on that.
Yeah, sorry. If we could do that this evening, um, we can always, if that is a direction, we can always have another public hearing at the August fourteenth meeting, but just as a requirement, to satisfy that requirement, I would ask to have it this evening. Um, just to ensure that if there are any modifications or clarifying questions that I could have them resolved by August.
Okay, thank you.
And Carrie, when do you expect the ordinance to come before council? You said in July?
Yes, so with the moratorium and timing, um, it gets a little tricky, but it's definitely doable. Um, it'll be the July twenty-fourth city council meeting where I'll present the solar garden ordinance. Um, that goes, planning commission will have the review at their July eleventh meeting. And then to you guys on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the conditional use permit, Enterprise Energy, please step forward. Just state your name and, uh, address for the record.
Doug Fern, seventeen eighteen Grizzly Lane. I guess my question is, if I'm not mistaken, is this Mr. Fitzham's property?
This is identified as Fitzham Development LLC, yes.
So it is the mayor's property?
Yep, that is my property.
Okay, and if, I, I've been out of touch a little bit on this, but I'm, I'm just curious. There's been a lot of stuff in the, in the press and all this, and you guys are taking all this heat. And if I'm not mistaken, this sole, whole solar deal is a real sketchy, not sure what we're gonna do or whatever. And then we've got a mayor sitting on the city council asking for a conditional use permit for something that we're not really sure what we're gonna do in the heart of Sartell next to property that actually I myself own and the city owns and all this, and we're gonna put solar panels right in there, not knowing future developments and all that. I think you guys better think really, really hard on that. And if you're gonna say tonight's the only night we talk about it and try to recommend that we don't talk about it, I know as a business owner, when your boss is asking for something and you tell him no, it doesn't sit real well. And you guys are all the boss, so I hope you think about that, Ryan. When you've got a lot of people pointing fingers at you, trying to do this in the heart of Sartell is ridiculous. And I hope if I was up here asking for it, you'd say the same thing and somebody else. So I am not at all for that in any means whatsoever. It's gonna affect all that, it's gonna affect in a park that we just heard about too. So people are upset about a golf course that's still gonna continue for thirty years? That solar panel place is gonna be there, quote unquote, for thirty years. And somebody better do some more due diligence, because for a couple days of my due diligence, solar farms aren't real great. Especially when they end up in our landfills. So I hope you guys think real hard as a city council on that. Thank you.
Thank you, and for clarification, um, I am abstaining from all discussion and obviously vote, so. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Uh, I'm Evan Carlson, I'm the applicant, I own Enterprise Energy. And, uh, just to clarify, this, this is my project. I, I approach landowners, uh, with properties that I think are best suited for solar development. And the reason I like, uh, I like this one is because if you are in Excel Energy's territory and on that line, this is as far away as you can get from any existing residences, so, you know, the genesis of the idea is me, I'm the developer, and fingers are gonna be pointed, they can be pointed at me. I'm used to it. Um, a- as far as the work that's been done, I, you know, I'd like to thank staff and then thank all of you for giving it such uh, careful consideration. I know a lot of work has gone into it to date. Um, it's been a thoughtful process and I'm hopeful that, uh, when this is over, uh, I will be able to meet and exceed any, uh, uh, new, uh, conditions or restrictions that will go into the new ordinance. Um, if there's anything else I can do to, uh, to get into compliance with it, I'm happy to do it in terms of screening and things like that, that, uh, tend to be the conditions that go into it. Uh, however, we don't have that ordinance right now, so I can't get into a ton of detail about compliance. Uh, however, one important thing that I do that is quite unique about this project is, is the, the wetland issue, so. When you, you don't see solar panels just go into like water, you know, wetlands like that, because that would be a net, uh, you know, drawback to the quality of the wetlands, but in this case, it's a farmed wetland. It's, it's mostly dry. So when we go in there and we put the driven I-beams, it's a, it's a post that gets driven into the ground, it's not a concrete footing, it's just a post. We can yank that thing out of the ground without having ever poured concrete there. So, um, when we do that, that area that's currently farmed actually becomes a wetland. So right now would not be, it's what, it's more of a hydric soil. But when we put that into the pollinator seed mix, it will become a wetland and then it's a DNR protected wetland and it'll be that way forever. So there is an unusual environmental benefit to adding solar into this particular area. Uh, apart from the fact that is, i- it is as far away from adjoining homes as you possibly can get and still be within the program and within the city. So again, um, you know, I don't have the new ordinance front of me, I'm looking forward to working with staff and thank you for the careful consideration and work that, uh, both you and the planning commission have given, uh, this project and solar generally. Does anybody have any questions for me about mechanics of it, how it's constructed, how the program works, or anything like that?
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on conditional use permit, Enterprise Energy? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, uh, dis- Council, uh, discussion.
Another question for Carrie, um, can you walk us through if if we delay this for sixty days until we have the ordinance, and if the ordinance identifies a CUP as the mechanism for approval, can you walk us through what that looks like in light of this particular CUP? And then walk us through what it would look like if it's an interim use permit and what would have to occur with this particular project to satisfy the, the ordinance?
Absolutely. Um, I'll just give a brief overview of interim use permit compared to conditional use permit. Um, legally, the conditional use permit, as it states, it quote unquote runs with the land. Um, in that intent is mainly for use of the property. Um, for example, a shopping mall may be a conditional use within a certain zoning district. Um, there wouldn't be a time limit requirement as you wouldn't know when or how that would convert into a different use. However, interim use permit has a sunset clause intertwined within that meaning and definition. However, you can mirror a conditional use permit with an interim use permit. Um, one of the conditions within the packet with, within the resolution is a condition that limits the, the time period to thirty-five years, that's already within the resolution. So we can add a condition of a time limit. So after thirty-five years, it would automatically expire. Basically meeting the interim use permit, it's just a different avenue to get there. However, in the future, we would wanna just stick with the interim use permit just for consistency and clarification purposes. But conditional use permits, a lot of it is negotiation processes with conditions. Um, for example, with the car wash conditional use permit, if we remember back to that, a lot of landscaping requirements and maintenance for that was a condition within that permit. So we can modify that to reflect and meet the standards of an interim use permit. It's just um some tech, technical details and definitions and conditions within it. Moving forward, and um I will share that the intent for the solar garden ordinance would be an interim use permit. However, we can match the conditional use permit to meet the same standards and requirements. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so in this particular situation, we would, if, if what was decided was interim use, we would take those requirements and apply them to the, this particular conditional use so that it mirrors, in essence.
Absolutely, we, we could, um, and uh the intent and um any discussion I've had would be that there's no issues with meeting that requirement, um, whatever the solar garden ordinance would be. Um, so it would, it would just be mirroring those conditions within that permit to mirror the requirements of the new ordinance.
Got it, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions for staff?
With the passing of the moratorium, um, I would agree with um staff's recommendation that a sixty day uh, if I'm gonna delay on this, would be most appropriate, um, just with regards to this or, or this moratorium or any other one we've done in the past. I think it would be important to make sure that um prior to passing um anything even under a conditional use permit, it'd be in best practice to, to wait until that moratorium has expired.
Can you, Carrie, speak a little bit more to the public forum and given that there's, there's nothing truly to base an opinion on, right? I mean, eh, for public to come today, there isn't an ordinance to calibrate that discussion with, so just curious about your thoughts there.
My, my thoughts on this um and discussion with the applicant and landowner is eh absolutely, we can have another public hearing, it's just a, it's just a matter of notifying and publishing and eh, that's, that's easy to do, um, and with, with um the context and the use, I, I think it would be appropriate to have another public hearing to actually voice our, um, the concerns of the conditions and actually have those in place and saying these are the conditions that we are imposing and these are the timeline, it's something solid um for public to provide input on, absolutely. It, it's just simply a formality that we need to check the box on one time, so um, if we want in, in that's the direction of council, we can absolutely have another public hearing on that August meeting as well. And I, from a staff recommendation, I, I would, um, I would recommend that due to the fact that even the applicant and landowner and public can voice that the intent is to meet all these requirements and this is how we're going to meet those requirements, I think is beneficial to both parties, just to get a better understanding of the actual proposed project and the scope of everything.
Thank you, I, I tend to agree, just so people have an opportunity to speak a- against the actual ordinance itself or for.
Um, I sat through the Planning Commission meeting on the June fifth. Um, uh, there was some excellent dialogue and concerns were brought up and um, a lot of issues were discussed at length. Um, I think that the Planning Commission has taken very good steps in assuring that we have the right information and the right ordinance in place. I think they, they were reviewing a lot of different setbacks and, and um concerns I think the general public would have, because it is something that is new to us in the city. And I, I think that we need to explore all avenues to make sure that we are, and I think we did make the right correct uh decision on putting a moratorium on the development at this point, so we can clarify some of the questions that the, I have, general public have, whoever. Um, and make sure that we are putting these in the right spot and that they are as environmental and uh sensitive as they say they are and moving forward. So I, I think as we push forward and this ordinance gets shaped, um, and we get input from the public and we get input from our own research and the developers have provided a lot of information to us. Um, I think, you know, moving forward at, at this pace and potentially, you know, extending it another sixty days. Um, and until we get that ordinance in place is probably the smart play to.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, uh, would ask for a motion?
Um, I, I, I didn't speak, because I think exactly what I was about ready to say, I think the reality is, is we put the moratorium in the place for this purpose uh to work through the ordinance with the Planning Commission, work through with staff uh to get to a place where we can actually do the right thing for a long-term development, so I would agree with staff um on their sixty day recommendation, I would make a motion to uh extend this sixty days.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
Just clarifying question, do we need to eh ma- include an amendment for another public hearing?
Ye- that would be my ask, yes, to make an amendment to have another public hearing when this is brought back for final review and consideration.
I would amend my motion to include a future public hearing.
Second that.
Motion has been amended and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero one abstain. The next public hearing is on Small Cities Development Program?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, we have with us tonight Dustin Switters, uh, from Central Minnesota Housing Partnership. He's gonna be here to present the details of the project, so I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, so I am from Central Minnesota Housing Partnership. We recently administered the Small Cities Development Program in Sartell, two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two. Um, I was hired on by Central Minnesota last fall, so I was not uh able to be part of that administration. I came in with the last two weeks of the program. Um, so, part of that, the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development likes to do their own kind of closing process, process on these. Uh, and I was asked about a second public hearing. Due to our staff turnover, uh, there was no one in my position for about the six months before I was hired, it was missed. So we're holding that today to kind of give you an update of the program. Uh, it is open for residents to have questions and comments, more so on the comments side, since it is closed now, the questions I can answer. Uh, but I don't know if there's a whole lot we can do about it now that the program is completed. Um, to just kind of give you an overview of what we did get accomplished, uh, the owner occupied project goal was four homes and we did complete three of the four homes there. And for single-family rental, we completed two out of the five projects. Uh, where it doesn't look so good, and me coming in, I was trying to understand and learn uh about what had happened throughout the process of the administration, uh, based on some of the answers I got, conversations, research I did. A, a lot of it came down to COVID being twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and you guys got hit the hardest along with the other twenty nineteen administered program. Um, cause I've seen some of the programs that were started in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and they both started very slowly, they are just now picking them up. So duplex goal was two, we had zero applicants over the three-year span of the program. Uh, and then for the multifamily goal, it was much larger, but that was the one that was hit the most by COVID was the multifamily. I think it was a lack of tenants and owners wanting people in their buildings. It was a lack of owners and material costs, cause material costs, if you guys recall, the pallets of lumber memes that were out there. Uh, costs were not beneficial to homeowners or property owners in general during twenty twenty or twenty one, twenty twenty-one either. Um, so that is the gist of what I can update you on, we did have to return a lot of money on the grant. Uh, that is unfortunate, I know you guys ran the grant also in twenty fourteen through twenty seventeen to a much greater success than this most recent one. So realistically speaking, I think that Sartell would be good to run the program again after a few years of time have passed, just to allow us some other cities into the program as well. Do you guys have any questions about how some of that was done?
Any questions for the Small Cities Development Program? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Council, no, uh, no action is requested from staff on that. New business, sewer connection study agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, so, this, what this item is, is to do a study to look at sewer capacities uh from the city of Sartell into St. Cloud. Uh, can you go to the next slide, Rob? Uh, can't see this real well, but in the up, upper middle, you'll see lift station one. That is where all our flow goes through. We've talked about this lift, lift station a number of times. Uh, we've got a project to work on the force main, uh, surge tank to, to help preserve that force main, but all our flow goes through that eighteen inch pipe through that lift station. So a part of the two thousand eighteen uh sewer study was to look at, you know, additional capacities, how we tie into the city of St. Cloud and what are options. So this is the next step in that, it is to look at that which is shown in red and then purple as, one, to provide additional capacity, but two, to provide some redundancy. Right now, our quote unquote eggs are all in one basket with lift station one and that force main that goes on into St. Cloud. So this study would take a look at the flow that would come to that, so it comes from the west to that red manhole direct it south potentially and to another lift station and have a second crossing of the river uh to get to the same point uh just south of Whitney. Uh, that, in, in, in relation to, that gives us additional capacity potential, cause that, that flow will now go to lift station one. Lift station one would additional, would continue to serve all those properties and flows coming from the north and the east. But the other part of this is to looking at how we can provide that redundancy if a lift station has to come out of service, if there is a problem that we can work those two stations back and forth and keep things moving, so it would not be the crisis it is if there's a problem at, at lift station one. Uh, so, so this is just part of that capital improvement planning and taking it to the next step and just putting some uh, some engineering study to this effort, right now it's more on the, on the concept, so this would take, uh, doing, doing, doing some flow analysis again, uh, uh, what it would take to get under the river and looking at a lift station cost and getting it into the CIP so we can plan for it. Anything you would like to add, John?
No, any questions, I'd be happy to interject. Any questions?
With the new lift station, do you see that being similar to what lift station one is now, size? What I get as noise wise, I know you've had an older issue with the other one being in the middle of a park, obviously we wanna avoid that.
I, I would say probably similar, similar in the fact that um, that's kind of the, the way that, uh, you know, the lift station is probably put together. However, uh, this is property the city owns, this is in the, and next to the, uh, the, uh, the biking park.
Tucker Regional Park.
Yeah, s- so, uh, we would have no residents right there to, with that odor issue that we're, we're dealing with. Um, so this is that first step to really kind of sort out some of those, those challenges and the uh, what it would take to do that.
Just for the, you know, the future or the past, when the first lift station was built, kind of the, always the theory was, and the always theory that I knew, we were gonna run another line right next to that one, or run two parallels coming in. Um, this makes a lot more sense, cause they're giving us some redundancy, if we can tie the two together, we, we have that redundancy, we're not, we're not just putting, again, all our eggs in the one basket of the one lift station. So this, this seems to make, depending on whether the study comes out, a lot of sense.
Was there a calendar date set for that redundancy or second line to go in, or has it just been something in the future?
Just something in the future, capacity wise. You know, where, where that number got to, you know, and, and we're, we're inching up on it, uh. I, I just said to somebody, what, you know, I, something I remember when Councilman Smith came on or Councilmember Smith came on, she said, what keeps you up at night? And I said, lift station one force main. I mean, it, it takes, it, I mean, that, that is a, a something that I've really pressed to, we need to, you know, really get going on future use of that and what we can change to make it better.
You know, the, the, the investment that we'd make into that second uh force main that could be diverted potentially to, to this concept. So that's, before we, we just go down that path and have that second lift station, or excuse me, second force main all the way, that we would take a look at this as a potential to give us some more flexibility long-term.
John, uh, in the memo, it talks, or maybe it's got, it talks a lot about um the need for additional capacity, can you level set for us where we're at on capacity today and like, when do we truly need additional capacity versus?
Well, th- there's many factors, so right now we do about one point five million gallons a day, pump out of that station to St. Cloud. When we get rain? Someday, um, we have sump pump issues, uh, we have a lot of sump pumps, I believe, hooked into our sanitary sewer, which is not allowed, but i- it's really hard to police. So when we get rains, um, our flows go up substantially and, and and they stay up for, you know, three, four, five days. So as long as, you know, we don't have the I and I, and I and I isn't through our, you know, So as long as, you know, we don't have the I and I, and I and I isn't through our, you know, a lot of people talk about I and I. Through our our mains. I don't believe that's a huge issue. We got very little clay tile sewer main left. Uh, that West Side project will fix all our clay tile, which are are some of the main culprits of I and I. I just believe we have a hu- a big problem with the sump pump areas that are are really flowing into our lift stations. And eventually, you know, we're paying for that clean water, going to the St. Cloud for treatment, so. Um, you know, on a rain, we'll run almost twenty-three hours a day nonstop down at that main lift station. Where we probably average right now twelve to fifteen hours.
So in the next ten years, do we hit capacity, or is it the next twenty-five years?
I don't know.
And I guess the reason I ask that is, I I mean, I I like the concept plan, um. Part of my head goes to, do we do a study now? And if we don't actually complete this project for a decade, is the study valid? Depending on changes with with property use or others in that area. And and so I'm trying to rationalize doing the study at a point in time when we recognize. Uh, we're gonna need to add it into our CIP. And we're gonna actually need to move on something, whether it's this option or whether it's a second force main in parallel like you've spoke about.
Yeah, I think I think part of the study and and the line that it's gonna pick up is is gonna really influence the medical arts area. And I think that's something we're trying to grow and that'll take a lot of that flow and it'll really help us a lot there. If that is the the direction the city goes and we get that expansion there, which I think we're hoping for. So it'll take all that flow out of that whole medical arts area and and direct it to, you know, another feed into the city. Or into the St. Cloud system. So I I think that'll help dramatically.
You know, part of the 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 work would include updating all those models. Forecasting that that those design flows to find, hopefully find that approximate time when. To answer your question, when that we would need to pull a trigger on an expansion. So that was, that study was done back in eighteen, I think, last time it was was done.
I mean, this study's gonna produce a pretty big, large number.
Sure.
You know, so it's it's, and I believe it's gonna be a pretty large number, so. For budget-wise and to, you know, help Rob with, you know, fitting that in, I I I think the sooner you can pinpoint. At least close to that number, the direction we would go would help immensely.
So the last time we did the study was eighteen, which then kind of signals to me that we need to be planning on on actually constructing this. Or doing something meaningful with it within the next five years?
Five to ten.
Probably not within five, but yeah, five to ten.
Is this, is this something that um, I know we're putting a lot of infrastructure money into that. Medical tech area that, um. And I I would guess that the hospital plaza area right now. Has a different system that they're using or a different line that they exit, or does it all come up through lift station one?
All comes through the station one. The entire city comes to the station one.
No, but I I think he's referring.
That St. Cloud side of things.
Referring to the south of one twenty, where the plaza is.
Oh, no, that.
They have their own.
They have their own. That goes into a big lift station right behind there. Sorry. Yep.
Okay, because I know that they have plans to build, you know, dormitories and and a a large expansion, so I'm wondering.
And they're uh, they're upgrading, they're upgrading some of their sewer lines back there and they're actually upsetting, upgrading that lift station. And they approached us about if we wanted to join in and upgrading that, but it it really doesn't fit into our plan the way our our. System runs, we'd have to redirect a lot to make it work. And that was a couple years ago, they asked us, or was it last year?
I was like, last year.
They they asked us participate in some costs and upgrading that lift station. It just, I didn't think it fit into where our plan would be.
That would reverse, cost us to reverse some fairly significant flows where this, uh, that's split pretty close together. And there's still, we wouldn't need to redo any major mains or or change directions of any flows. Other than that, that connection right there, we would, well, actually, it wouldn't do any rearrangement. It would just be more of that the interconnect. That we would look at. That other, if you're way over there, that doesn't allow any interconnect. Where this is a, you know, that redundancy.
We changed no flows here. Every, we just split it.
And how, I mean, you know, the study hasn't been done, so there isn't a lot of evidence and, but how disruptive it to that park would be something like this project?
You know, I I call this the color crayon stage, so that's just thrown in there to to show it. It has nothing to do with the actual uh alignments uh and places it would be. It is surely there for for concept. Yes, that would need to be, where does it least disrupt? Uh, how does it fit into the landscape? That's, I don't know if we get into that level in this study. That's more of that next level design. This is more going to be, it makes sense to do this. Here's the flows. Here's what you may need to do it. And this is approximately the size of the station.
And remember, this is a force main that we're gonna be putting in there, so force mains can be directional drilled. So it won't be much open cut up through there. Most of it should all be able to directional drill. In theory.
Can you, um, John or Scott, speak to redundancy a little bit? So conceptually, if something happened to lift station one, you can reroute everything to the new station. I mean, that's. The idea, right?
That would be our goal. Now, yeah, you gotta work the elevations to work, but that would be our goal, that you could. Uh, run all the flows to the new one from lift station one if there's a problem with that force main and vice versa, that you could do it the other way. Uh, and and it it might be just, you might still, you'll still probably need the pumps to push things back and forth. But that that could go into St. Cloud and we, if we get a main downstream of of lift station one. We're dead in the water until that's fixed, where this would allow that. Uh, time to do a good repair or what have you, whatever would need to be done at a certain station or the other. I like the, you know, you you've. Probably the 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 John's predecessor, that may not be the thing that keeps them up at night. Would be lift station one, if there's an opportunity to have lift station one A carry the load if need be.
Right, because right now, if lift station one. We're in trouble.
Don't talk about this, Jill. Yeah, I mean, it is our, it's our lifeline. I mean, it it, that is our lifeline and it has failed. You know, three, four times in my career.
Rob, is this, I guess I'm trying to understand from the memo, is this budgeted for, is this a new unexpected expense?
No, the thirty thousand for the study is budgeted for. It was part of our CIP last year. Um, so included in the budget in twenty twenty-three, so um, has my blessing.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. I would look for a motion on the sewer connection study agreement. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement as stated. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
Scott, I think you're probably taking all of them tonight, so.
I'm I'm like, this is my carry moment.
Trail gaps project award.
Yes, uh, so we've opened bids for the Trail Gaps Project. Again, I'd like to say that this project has about sixty-two percent as we look at the bids. Uh, covered by federal, federal transportation alternative grant. Uh, we received, let me make sure I get that right. We received.
Four.
Four bids. CNL was low. Um, pretty close to the estimate, little, little bit above like, you know, but pretty close. CNL's done a lot of work in town. Um, you know, those are the locations. We call it trail gaps. Because those are the 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 areas that were not uh picked up or missing uh trail or sidewalks. So this would be just kind of filling those holes. Uh, I guess I'd ask, get questions regarding the project. We would recommend an approval. Uh, to CNL uh to do the work and again, it's about sixty-two percent is covered by federal dollars.
Counsel, any questions on the Trail Gaps Project Award?
Have we had any more dialogue in probably maybe not the appropriate time? But um, with the residents of some of these, I mean, there was some opposition to these and they kind of came and stated. Have we had conversations with them moving forward, or is it just they stated it and we're moving forward?
Well, so I'm speaking for April and and April led this, so I I believe, I'm pretty well certain, otherwise we wouldn't have gotten the light. The ability to bid it that we received and obtained all and any property documents that we need to build the project.
Okay.
She led any discussion with the residents, so I'll be honest with you, I can't speak to that in any detail.
I know we had heard from a number of residents that had come forward when this first study came out with some concern about. Their yard and, you know, nobody wants it in their yard, but I just want to make sure that we've given them ample amount of. Information about this. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the Trail Gaps Award? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Trail Grab uh project and award that work to CNL.
There is a motion to approve the project award. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? That carries. Twenty twenty-three overlays award.
So we also opened bids uh last week on the overlay. Uh, on the screen, you got two colors. The red, which includes Fifteenth Street North and those intersections, which are the alternate. You'll see the word alternate. That covers the intersections. That's an inch and a half mill and then a repave. And then uh twelfth, the purple, that's a full-depth reclamation and uh a a repave. That one's also a state aid road, so we've got state aid dollars that would help cover the cost of that project. Uh, we're trying something a little bit new uh with Fifteenth Street North. Where we're just taking off the inch and a half and putting an inch and a half back. Uh, some of the area cities, particularly St. Cloud's been trying that as a way to stretch those overlay funds. And this seemed like a good project to to try that on. It was in decent enough shape that an inch and a half mill and repave. Would go farther with the dollars. It's not a state aid road, so uh we aren't required to meet that state aid standard. So this is our suggestion, is this project to try the inch and a half reclaim or mill, excuse me, and repave. So that's how we bid the project. Uh, we received again.
And sorry, while you're, um, what's the difference? What what would we have done?
What we would typically do is is reclaim all the way into the gravel.
Okay.
Uh, pull off that equivalent of the new asphalt section, recompact, regrade, and then pave four inches down. So this is allowing us to to stretch it. Now, not really proven, but uh the Sartell's, excuse me. St. Cloud's been having some success with that, so place to to give it a try.
Me and April met with with St. Cloud and talked to them about their theory. We also had a meeting with uh. The paving company, one of the paving companies, and went through it and and they seem to think it it's the way to go and don't stretch your money. For these overlays, you can get almost twice the work done. So we, you know, this Fifteenth Street seemed like the place to try it.
Okay.
So we received two bids, uh Knife River being low. Now, we were, they were, they're about a hundred and forty-five grand over the, over the estimate. Um, so and and that is almost exclusively in the amount of curb and gutter included. Their dollar value for curb and gutter was almost twice what we estimated. So we had thirty percent removal. That was, I'll be honest with you, that was a shot, you know, can, because of what we used in the past. As we look at this, we looked at the numbers, we looked at the curb and gutter, actually, that would be removed, we believe we'll underrun that affair amount. Uh, I don't know exactly how much yet, but we'll underrun that number to get us closer. Uh, budget-wise, like I said, there's, what is it, five hundred and ninety grand will be coming from state aid. So the local share is just about eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, budgeted for twenty twenty-three, correct if I'm wrong here, Rob, for twenty twenty-three for seal coat. Overlays and street and storm is about just under two million dollars. So this would take about eight hundred thousand dollars of that two million.
Is that correct? Yep, that's correct.
So our, it is our recommendation to move forward with Knife River to make these repairs. Uh, you can see the proposed schedule. It would be uh do it this summer and get it done this fall. Questions?
Counsel, any questions on overlays?
Can you walk me back through the inch and a half versus doing the full thing and do, I mean, is there any data there that shows? So first would be, my first question would be, what is the difference in costs? It's half, or what what is the difference?
Four inches of of asphalt back. We're gonna put an inch and a half, so probably about half. Uh, in addition, when we do the full reclaim, we're doing uh reclaiming, we're taking material away. And we're recompacting, regrading, and then paving. So there's additional work there. When we do the mill, they're gonna come in with the, almost the same machine though, but they're only gonna take that inch and a half off and that's gonna go in a truck right away. And they'll just haul that off. And then we come back, we'll do, like I said, we'll do some curb and gutter repairs. We need some uh. Um, pet ramps as we would need, and we come back and pave it. It'll go, I think it's gonna go quicker. Uh, we, you gotta choose the right road. It can't be too uh cracked up, because those cracks are gonna reflect through. So you gotta pick one that isn't beyond being able to do this. So that's kind of the 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 art to get to this, is make sure we got the right road. And we think twel- uh Fifteenth is, would fit this.
At one point two on Fifteenth, it's it's very rocky and hard soils out there. You're not dealing with any soft, you know, wet areas. It's a very hard, rocky area out there. It's one of them areas that you can work in many areas of Sartell and when they built Morning Star area. They had to do a lot of hydro excavating, because all the rock and, you know, they couldn't dig through it. It was just too expensive. So this, we feel is probably a great opportunity to use this method, you know, for the area that we're using it in.
It won't fit every, every road, uh, but where we can stretch it, we'll see this, this could help us stretch it.
In your conversations with St. Cloud, did you ever get any feedback as relates to how long have they been doing this, or like, is there an estimation on the length of time it's gonna last versus doing it fully?
Yeah, so that's always the question. What's the, what's the length of the street? You always say a new street should last you twenty-five years. Usually, you write them about thirty-five years. Uh, I would guess, and you do a seal coat every seven to eight years, uh, so this is an interim. This is, uh, it's not just an overlay. It is a a mill and then a an overlay. I would get you, provided, like John said, the subgrade's good. And the subgrade has to be good. If the subgrade's good, you should be able to get twenty years, fifteen at least, twenty likely.
I'm just hoping you document all that, so that in fifteen years, this council has all that information.
It's gonna be in the minutes we can find them, right?
Yeah, yeah, I see one guy really smiley about this who won't appear in fifteen years to say whether it worked or not.
He'll, he'll be sleeping through the night, though.
Yeah.
To your point, though, this is a project, we, you gotta, you gotta make note of that going forward, that uh it is something we tried a little different. Yeah, in the past, you know, you redo a road, you just take it all out. So we used, we now went to the reclaim, when you you mill it all up and you recompact, that works pretty well. But you're still putting that full depth of asphalt back. The other option is you just overlay. You mill it out, the edges of the of the curb and gutter, a few feet, and then you overlay. It gets mixed results, too. Uh, I think this might be a nice middle course to to see if we can stretch our dollars.
So when we set the budget for this project, did we take this technique into consideration and we still came in over budget? Or are we, I mean, if this is supposed to be cost-saving, is it cost-saving or is it time extension? I mean, it's still over budget, but.
Well, the budget, the two million, that was throwing everything in there. Seal coats, uh, stormwater repairs and overlays. Uh, the estimate, we're over on the estimate. I wouldn't say we're over on budget. The estimate that, I'll be hon- The estimate, we're over on the estimate, I wouldn't say we're over on budget, the estimate that, I'll be honest, forty dollars a foot, forty-five dollars a foot for curb and gutter, that caught us. Not seen that before, both both the bidders were right there with that number. So that caught us, I mean, that you can point to that line alone. So let's just say we're gonna be judicious in the amount of curb we remove to try to get back to where where we are, where we wanted to be.
I love the uh creativity, I guess I'll say, or the um new techniques that we're trying. I I think similar to Jed, I'm a bit hesitant. Um, I'll, I recall fondly you and I standing on on Nineteenth uh as that was being reconstructed last year and you should, you were actually demonstrating to me the subsoil and how it was like a sponge and how road was built previously and how you're rebuilding it now and um. So I have some apprehension of how some of these roads were constructed historically, or maybe how things have really progressed in a new techniques. In a in a cost savings model, I I guess I'm for it. And uh Fifteenth might be a new one for us to watch and maintain. Are there pockets where you'd recognize, hey, the subsoil is is bad here, we're actually going to? I mean, is that included in this or are we just saying, hey, there might be some subsoil that's terrible and we're gonna pave over it?
Well, you, yes, so not every road's gonna be a candidate for this.
Yeah.
Subsoils, if you see rutting rutting with, uh, there's a problem with the subgrade.
Right.
So it's probably yielding, and this is not gonna be a good technique for that. Uh, this is more, uh, you know, the the subgrade's good, we haven't seen any failure that way. So and it's not deteriorated to the point that uh the 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 two and a half inches left need to go to, so it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Like I said, out there, we don't have sump pump issues, we don't have water on the roads, we don't have, you know, we have good subsoil, so it it's really a good candidate to try it.
Good.
Safe candidate.
Is there a timeframe as to when you'd know whether it works, or is it, is it really ten, fifteen years?
That's a good question, I think you're gonna know in a couple of years. You're gonna see how much the cracking reflects through, if there is any and uh any shifting. Three to five?
I think it would be nice, I mean, if all, obviously if this works, I like the creativity too, but then ultimately get to a place where we have someone who understands the surfaces and the subsoils that we have and build a map of, you know, somewhere where we go through the budgeting process, we understand roads that actually have the availability for this type of resurfacing if it works.
I I think that's a logical next step uh is when we get the overlay map, which we have, that we start looking for candidates for this type of.
Sure.
And we're not gonna have a lot of candidates here, really, we're we're, you know, that area is gonna be your your prime candidate for this stuff.
Question on the schedule, is there any chance you think you'd have substantial completion before school starts or is that, I know those two roads probably feed a lot to east and west.
Contractor yet? That will feed into a lot of that, uh, we try not to squeeze them too hard, you know, right, cuz pricing changes uh understand, uh, end of August would be nice. I think we will probably into school with these, though, I'll be honest.
We definitely will push for that once.
Before they start or before they finish?
Oh, no, before they finish.
Finish.
Oh, yeah, they'll 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 start, sure.
Um, other things to consider would be also, I I don't know if they're holding any tournaments or state tournaments or some of that stuff and uh, we've seen that before where we forgot to ask that question. And then, and are you doing them both at the same time? Cuz they're obvious, okay.
No, they'll be used separate so they can detour, they can use one or the other.
Yeah, I would say that's a big ask of what's going on with baseball up there.
Yeah, I mean, so we got the high school this week, um. You know, I don't I don't know what the rest of the schedule is.
Yeah, that's true.
We will be, we we'll be working with kind to get that schedule and I get I get your point on what can we do before school's done? Not if both tore up, I would prefer, I'd like to have one of them done, right?
Right.
And then not to get in front of the the next one, but the uh or actually approved it already tonight, the um the Northside Park reconstruction. Um, will that happen with Twelfth Street timing?
No, that's got a very specific windows. We got windows of when they've gotta do that to avoid, and I don't have them in front of me, but there's there were some cert, two, give them two windows, one was in July. Oh, I'm sorry.
Far Side.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Northside Hill, the where we're regrading that.
I don't know if we we don't, we, I know we don't have a timeframe on it, but well, we can, we can structure that.
That that we got more degrees of freedom.
My mind just goes to not wanting to have a brand new Twelfth Street and then see an excavator tromping all over it to fix a hill.
Nope, agreed, yep.
For sure.
Counsel, any other questions? If not, would look for a motion on the twenty twenty-three overlay award? There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the overlays, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Pinecone Central Park Trail Award.
Okay, alright, so last meeting or two meetings ago, uh, I think I I had a few you fall off your chair when you saw total price, so we looked at breaking this up into the schedules we talked about, so Schedule A, so Phase One or Part One would be the blue. And then B and C were the yellow and the green, so you would give the council some ability to pick and choose how much of the project we would construct. Uh, we did get pricing uh from three, four, three. Uh, CNL was low uh at, you can go to the next one, Rob, at forty-two for Phase, excuse me, Schedule A, you can see Schedule B and Schedule C all in, it was a a pretty good number, so to keep back to keep getting close to our uh our budget amount, we're actually suggesting we just get Schedule A done, get that north-south seg- segment done. And then as future um phases, dollars, future years, you can work on the east-west segments. So that is our recommendation award Schedule A and Schedule A only to uh to CNL.
And we did initially budget fifty thousand, so the average of eleven thousand. Were able to use cash balance within our regional sales tax fund without um affecting any purchases in our capital improvement plan over the next five years, so we do have the flexibility to fund the additional eleven thousand out of regional sales tax.
Counsel, any questions on Pinecone Central Park Trail Award? Seeing none, I would look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Schedule A.
There's a motion to approve Schedule A as presented. I'll assume you're throwing soft cost in there, too?
Yes.
Uh, there's a motion to approve as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
You wanna stay up and do the uh public works engineering or? We're onto department reports, public works and engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, just a little update on our water flows. Um, we're we're pumping about five point five million a day right now for the last ten days. It's it's, we're extremely high uh normally in a normal year, if there is a normal year anymore. We probably only do that about five times a year. Um, we're we're keeping up, um, it it's going well right now, as well as can be expected. Uh, we really wanna stress the odd even watering. The biggest drop in our towers is in the morning and then we recoup and we're we're good through the through the day and through the night, actually. So uh we've changed some operational things from last year that I think have helped us, we're running on a pressure system. We can run our system on pressure, tower levels, and we're running on pressure. Our plants run longer, almost completely, they run almost all the time, at least at a a low flow to keep the pressure up, but it's working very well at this point, so just an update on the water flows, so. Any other questions I'd be happy to answer?
Not to put you on the spot, but kind of be proactive from last year, let's say we go another two weeks like this, are we looking at maybe have to take additional steps with watering or what's?
I think possibly yes, I mean, if it keeps at this, yes, we will be probably going to some stricter regulations, yes.
Uh, sorry, if you could go back, what is our current flow today?
Five point five million.
And what's our max with both online?
On paper, um, we can, we can do about eight to ten.
Okay.
But I don't know.
So and if, last year, we've we've got the the ability to move that water uh and source that water, if I recall, last year, a lot of the discussion was what does it do to our um DNR agreement of how much we're pulling out of wells?
Yeah, I mean, we we have us, we can pull six hundred and fifty million a year.
Okay.
You know, so it's, we're we're always right there, I mean, every year, so.
Something to keep an eye on.
And, you know, just a side note, the legislature um approved an increase on our, and I don't know, I mean, I didn't realize until I got the email. So in past years, we paid thirty dollars per million gallons, they upped it to fifty dollars per million gallons in twenty twenty-four, Rob? You know, so it's a substantial increase on our our water for all cities.
Sure. Any other questions for public works and engineering? Thank you. Fire?
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, you have monthly report for fire, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the fire department? Seeing none, thank you. Police?
Mayor, members of the council, you have our monthly report. If you have any questions, let me know, I just wanna give a little quick shout out to all the members of whoever put uh some work into Summer Fest. Uh, I think, I thought it went off very well, um, from our standpoint, uh appeared to be a great crowd, uh, so it was a great day, so thank you for everybody that worked on it.
Awesome. Any questions for police department?
I have one. Did our new chief show up?
He did, he led the parade, he didn't get lost and so everything's good there, he just, uh, the first couple of weeks, he said his schedule was kind of hectic, so but uh hopefully everything kind of calms down and he'll.
Excellent.
Yes, we will have a, next council meeting, we'll have his official uh swearing in.
Thank you. Uh, city commission updates, I've got a couple of notes here from staff. Uh, planning commission meeting moved to the eleventh of July due to the Fourth of July holiday. And also a reminder that they are accepting park um commission applications through June thirtieth, accessible on the website. Anything else?
Yeah, we we so far have two applicants, um, and if anyone has questions regarding the application, where to find it, access it, link it, um, just reach out to me and I can forward that link.
Great, thank you. Uh, city council committee updates, Tim?
Uh, great job on Summer Fest this weekend, I think it was like we'd said earlier, it was a great success, so good job.
Jill?
Nothing tonight.
Alex? Jed?
Nothing tonight.
I would echo the um how fantastic it was for Summer Fest to be held uh back on County Road One, River Road. Um, fun to see it. It, I thought we widened the road, but going through the parade, it it felt like it was a lot narrower. See it's some head nods that it is. Uh, so it 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 was a really cool feel uh having an opportunity to go through the parade and and be that close to the people and um, it was very, very well attended. Uh, and then kicking that off on Friday night, um Libertyville was a huge success once again. I know Voight Johnson, their barbecue, they had two thousand ham or uh hot dogs they were going through for free. Um, so great success there, later that night, uh, we opened up the new Sartell pedestrian bridge. And it was fun to see um a lot of the community turn out for that and had some fun um checking out the new sites, so. That's all I would add, and look for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. We're adjourned.